Thank you ma'am. At this time, good evening ladies and gentlemen. At this time I'd like to call in to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Meridian Planning and Zoning Meeting for the date of December 5th and let's start with roll call.
Thank you Mr. Chair. Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Commissioner Seal?
Here.
Commissioner McCarver?
Here.
Commissioner Cassinelli?
Here.
Commissioner Fitzgerald?
Here.
Absent is Commissioner Olson.
Thank you Madam Clerk. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. We have one change. If anyone in the audience is here for the Silverstone Apartments' application which is H2019-0104, they are withdrawing that application. So the applicant has requested that withdrawn, so that won't be heard tonight. So if you're here for that, we're gonna pass them that application tonight because they're withdrawing it. With that change, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as amended for December 5th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Wish you passes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have one item on the agenda which is the approval of minutes for the P&amp;Z meeting for November 21st, 2019. With that being said, can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adopt the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Wish you passes, thank you very much. Okay. At this time, I want to take the opportunity to explain the public hearing process for this evening. We will open each item, which we have one item on the agenda, and then start with the staff report. The staff report, they will report their findings on how the item or the application adheres to our Comprehensive Plan and Uniform Development Code with the staff's recommendations. After the staff has made their presentation, the applicant will come forward to present their case for the approval of their application and respond to any staff comments. The applicant will have 15 minutes to do so. After such time, the applicant will, as they finish, will open the floor to public testimony. Hopefully, when you guys came in, there's an iPad in the back to sign up. Make sure if you'd like to testify tonight that your name's on there, so we can keep track of who's testifying. If any individual is here for an HOA, and there's a show of hands, folks who would like to have the HOA representative speak on their behalf, we'll give them 10 minutes to present on behalf of the HOA. And is there anyone here from an HOA or representing an HOA tonight? Just want to make sure. No? Okay. So at the time, after the public has a chance to say their comments, we'll provide the applicant an opportunity to close the discussion and respond to any questions or requests or comments from the audience. And then we will close the public hearing and give the commission a chance to deliberate on whether they want to make a recommendation on the application. So with that, we will shift and open the public hearing on H2019-0109, the Eddington Commons Application, and we'll start with the staff report.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cassinelli.
If I may before we start, I just want to let fellow commissioners know for the record that I, earlier today, I emailed both planning and legal because I had, I live near the area and I had noticed that the notice sign has been down and not visible. In fact, I didn't even, when I saw it on the agenda, I hadn't ever seen a sign, and then I noticed it was laying outside. So I just emailed that to planning and to legal, but I want to just let you know that that issue will not, does not affect, will not have any effect on my decision, but I wanted to let everybody know that, I put that on public record, that I did email.
Appreciate that. Thank you. And Andrea, anything else we need to do, want to cover that?
No.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we appreciate your comments and thank you. Sonya, we'll hand it over to you for staff report. Go from there.
Thank you Mr. Chair, Commissioners. The application before you is a request for annexation and zoning and a preliminary plat. This site consists of 13.49 acres of land. It's owned RUT in Ada County and is located just north of West Eustick Road on the east side of North Linder Road at 3610 North Linder Road. Adjacent land use and zoning to the north is Sawtooth Middle School, zoned R4. To the south is vacant undeveloped land, conceptually approved for commercial uses, zoned CC. That was the Sugarman property. To the east are rural residential agricultural properties with a home, zoned RUT in Ada County. And to the west is Linder Road and rural residential agricultural property with a home, zoned RUT in the county, and a future storage facility that was recently approved, zoned CC. The Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map designation for this property is medium density residential, which calls for three to eight dwelling units per acre. The applicant is requesting annexation and zoning of 14.56 acres of land with an R15 zoning district for the development of 92 single-family residential attached and detached units at a gross density of 6.83 units per acre, consistent with the medium density residential future land use map designation. A preliminary plat is proposed as shown that consists of 92 building lots, 10 common lots, and four other lots on 13.49 acres of land in the R15 zoning district. The plat is proposed to develop in two phases. Access is proposed via North Linder Road and Arturio Street with stub streets proposed to the east and south for future extension. Public streets are proposed for internal access, some with 27-foot wide street sections, and those are reduced from the typical and only allow parking on one side of the street. And that is this entry street right here, windswept, and then Woodpine Street here in the middle. Four common driveways are proposed for access to homes off the public streets. A parking exhibit was submitted as shown that demonstrates the amount of on-street parking available within the development due to the reduced 27-foot wide street sections proposed for Windswept Drive and Woodpine Street, which restrict parking to only one side of the street, and narrow building lots with 20-foot wide driveways leaving little room for on-street parking. Parking is a concern for this development. A total of 50 on-street parking spaces are available for use by residents and guests, as depicted on the plan there. Although the minimum parking standards for off-street parking are met, staff is concerned the amount of on-street parking may not be adequate, as historically there have been issues with residents using their garages for storage rather than parking, and people parking on both sides of narrow streets where parking is restricted, blocking emergency vehicle access. If the commission feels the on-street parking is not adequate, wider street sections that would allow parking on both sides of the street, wider building lots, and/or additional parking spaces in common areas could be required. They are not currently required in the staff report. A minimum of 10% qualified open space and one-side amenity is required to be provided for the development. The open space exhibit submitted includes areas shown as the hatched areas here that is not qualified towards the minimum requirements. Without these areas, the project does not meet the minimum open space standard. In order for the area along the northern boundary where the Coleman Lateral is located to qualify as linear open space, it would need to have an access at each end, and the entire area would need to be improved and landscaped with at least one deciduous shade tree per 8,000 square feet and lawn over the entire area. Because this area is entirely encompassed by an irrigation district easement, this isn't feasible. They won't allow trees. They may allow the grass through a license agreement, I'm not sure, but they won't allow trees. Because the parkways, excuse me, the pathways master plan depicts a multi-use pathway in this general area, staff is recommending a 20-foot wide common lot is provided along the rear of the building lots adjacent to the canal outside of the irrigation district's easement with a 10-foot wide pathway and five feet of landscaping on either side with a micro path connection to the pathway near the east side of the development. So that pathway would, is envisioned to be in a 20-foot common lot along the backside of these lots right here, and then a micro path proximally in this location right here. This pathway would eventually extend to the east when the abutting property redevelops to the existing pathway in Woodburn West, providing a connection to the on-street pathway along Linder Road and safe pedestrian access to the middle school to the north. Side amenities are proposed in excess of the minimum required as follows: a children's play structure, swing set, seating benches, climbing rocks, climbing dome, and a micro path. City code requires irrigation laterals such as the Coleman Lateral to be piped if they are not improved as a water amenity or linear open space. As previously mentioned, the area cannot be counted as linear open space, and it's not being improved as a water amenity per code requirements. Council may waive the requirement for the ditch to be piped if it finds the public purpose requiring such will not be served and public safety can be preserved. Because fencing is proposed adjacent to the canal, staff feels public safety can be preserved if council wishes to approve a waiver. If a 20-foot wide common lot is added in this area for a pathway as recommended by staff, a fence would need to be constructed between the pathway and the ditch to preserve public safety. Conceptual building elevations were submitted as shown for the proposed attached and detached structures. All homes along the west perimeter of the development adjacent to Linder Road are proposed to be a single-story in height, and those are indicated in red here. All the lots indicated in red are single-story, the yellow are two-story. Building materials consist of a mix of siding, horizontal and vertical lap siding, and board and batten with stone veneer accents. Colors are very monochromatic. The attached structures are required to comply with the design standards in the Architectural Standards Manual, which include a requirement for cohesive color scheme to be used, featuring a minimum of two field colors, a trim color and an accent color or unique material. Garage doors colors should coincide with this scheme or other accents. This is recommended as a DA provision. Staff is recommending these standards also apply to the detached units for consistency. To ensure homes are constructed with eaves consistent with the proposed concept building elevations, for aesthetic as well as to keep water away from the walls and foundations, staff is recommending a DA provision requiring all homes within the development to be constructed with minimum one-foot wide fire-rated eaves on all four sides. At the commission hearing for the Alpina Town Home Project, previously proposed on the adjacent mixed-use designated property to the south, but it was later withdrawn, there was a lot of discussion by the commission pertaining to their desire for that property and the subject property to develop uniformly, to ensure a true mix and integration of uses in this area. Because only a stub street is proposed to the adjacent property and the backside of homes face that property, staff is recommending that the commission determine if the proposed development provides an adequate transition to the mixed-use development as desired. Written testimony has been received from Whitney Montgomery in support of the project and a copy of the letter from Lauren Bailey, Devco, the applicant, to Steve and Andrea Lloyd, the property owners to the east, agreeing to limit the height of homes to a single-story adjacent to their property on lots 20 and 23 through 26, Block 1, and that's the red ones right here. Staff is recommending this restriction is included as a provision in the DA per the exhibit shown. Staff is recommending approval with the requirement of a development agreement per the provisions in the staff report. Staff recommends the project is continued to a later hearing date in order to allow time for the applicant to revise the plat, landscape plan, and qualified open space exhibit per the conditions of approval to ensure the project complies with the minimum UDC standards prior to the commission's recommendation to the city council. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you ma'am. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Cassinelli.
Sonya, I've got two questions. First of all, you talked about the canal and piping that, it says it's a, it says council may waive, so that is a council decision on that one?
That is correct, Commissioner Cassinelli. You may provide a recommendation if you'd like, but it is a council decision.
Thank you. And the other, can you, do you have off the top of your head lot sizes, dimensions for both R8 and R15?
R8 is 4,000 square feet. What else do you have? It's the R15, is it 2,000? 2,000 on the R15. And there's no minimum street frontage in the R15 district.
No minimum?
No.
And what's the minimum on?
And the R8 is 40 feet.
40 feet? Okay. And do you, well, I guess, piggyback on that, what, and maybe I could ask the applicant what the, what their smallest street frontage is, what they go down to, do you know?
I think they may have some below 32 feet, but I think most of them are 32. The applicant could answer that question for you.
Okay. And sorry, one more question if I can.
Commissioner Cassinelli, go ahead.
Is there a, is there a maximum number of lots that can be accessed off a private drive?
Yes, six.
Six, thank you.
Additional questions for staff? Mr. Seal?
Just one question, the report from the Meridian Fire Department, they want to limit the first and second phase to 30 dwellings. Is that something that is taken into consideration in the staff report?
Yes. They are limited to 30 building lots on a single access. If they get a secondary emergency access, then they can build the rest.
Is that something that's going to be part of this build-out, or I'm just, I'm not finding it anywhere that that's something that's going to be readily available or available by the time they start the first phase?
I'm not aware of one. The applicant can respond to that.
Just one question. Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Good evening, sir. How are you guys doing?
I'm doing great.
Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Heath Clark, 251 East Front Street in Boise, representing the applicant. So again, this is a project that is a medium-density development, and a couple of items that I want to mention right off the top to just kind of get you kind of familiar with the area and some of the thought process with this. This is 92 building lots, and we think it's in a very appropriate location. It's near Eustick and Linder. As you know, there's been widening in those areas already. There really are no traffic concerns. It is in an area that's near shopping centers, employment centers. It's a very appropriate location for this type of development. And you may have seen some of these projects in the past already, so you may know a little bit about it, but it's high-quality, low-maintenance product that comes in at a lower price point than what you would, might see as the average currently in Meridian. As Sonya mentioned, we do have an excess of the required neighborhood amenities. We have the large half-acre park, one required amenity under the code, but we actually have five: the children's play structure, the climbing dome, swings, climbing rocks, and the seating area. That's in addition to the pathways and sidewalks, and then the 15% open space, which we'll talk about here in just a second, because I think we have a disagreement with Sonya in terms of that calculation. As Sonya mentioned, we have made commitments with regard to the product type, and we have made the commitment to do single-level in the locations that are indicated in pink on this, on this diagram, and we are in agreement with that being a condition of approval. That's, that is something that we are more than comfortable with. I want to really emphasize that this is, from a, from a number of perspectives, this is a pretty straight-up application. It very clearly satisfies a number of comprehensive plan policies, including the provision of a diversity of housing types in areas that are close to employment centers, as I mentioned. It is an infill project, it's contiguous to services, this is the kind of thing that we should want to see in this location. The proposed R15 zoning complies with the land use map designations for medium density, and it complies with all of the R15 zone dimensional standards. There's no step-up that's been requested with this, with this project. So let's get into the details of some of the items that were raised in the staff report. Some of these became conditions of approval that I would like to circle back on. Some of them are just points of discussion, and that would include this parking element. So with regard to parking, the staff report indicates there may be a concern about parking and whether it's adequate. We do meet code parking standards with four onsite parking spots for each residence. So there's a maximum of three bedrooms in these houses, so you're gonna, that means that we are in excess of code. In addition, we have 50 on-street parking spots that are available. That's, in our opinion, that is very clearly more than adequate for this use. These are small homes, you're not going to see massive Super Bowl parties, there's just not room for that sort of thing. And there's no reason to, we meet the code standards, and there's no reason to change those code standards here. There's not a reason to expand the streets either. These streets should remain narrowed to calm traffic, to promote walkability, and to reduce public cost for maintaining these streets. The more pavement you put in, the more public cost there is to maintain, and that's an ongoing concern at ACHD. They want to see those streets as narrow as can, they can be safely maintained. The next item that was raised that I wanted to address was the relocation of the Lot 21 access. So you can see I've put a note, or an arrow here as to what's being suggested, and staff wants to move that down a little bit further. We disagree with that. We don't see a need to relocate it, and there's a number of reasons why. First, there's no block length issue. There's not a reason to need to break up that block length. And if you move that pathway with this driveway, you're basically creating a dead end in that location. With the pathway there, you open it up. It allows for a tie-in from the property to the west end of this, of this open space area that I'll discuss more in a moment. It also allows for more buffer to our neighbor to the east, and in fact, our neighbor to the east has requested that that stay there. So in our opinion, we think it's more appropriate for that to remain in the location that it's currently identified, rather than being relocated per staff. Now with regard to open space requirements, there's, staff's raised the question as to whether this area that you see where we have, where I have the red arrows qualifies as open space. Here's the language for qualified open space: linear open space area that is at least 20 feet and up to 50 feet, has an access at each end, and is improved and landscaped as set forth in subsection E of this section. Subsection E speaks to common open space shall be suitably improved for its intended use, except that natural features such as wetlands, rock outcroppings, ponds, creeks, et cetera, may be left unimproved. It also says at a minimum, common open space areas shall include one deciduous shade tree per 8,000 square feet and lawn, either seed or sod. Now there's a misunderstanding with regard to this. There is an easement in that area for the irrigation district, but it's only 15 feet from center line. What that means is that we do have area within this to be able to do the landscaping improvements that have been requested here. It's about 32,000 square feet, so that means approximately four trees, and to fit them outside of the irrigation district easement seems to us to be not, not a problem at all. And again, it will be landscaped per the, per the code requirements. Now the next item that I wanted to address is the pathway question. As of an hour ago, we thought we had this worked out with Parks Department. That has apparently changed. And so before I describe to you what we're proposing with regard to the regional pathway question, I do want to give you some context. So the question is whether we should be required to include a regional pathway across our project and in what location. City staff is asking us to allow the general public access across our property, you know, without any justification based on the needs that our property creates. We weren't previously aware that this regional pathway was an issue. That has to do with some apparent confusion between the maps that are on the city's website. At our pre-application meeting, the map on the left is what was presented. This is from the Planning Department's page for Bicycle and Pedestrian Resources. You can see the area in the blue there is the Sawtooth Middle School, the area in the green is Settlers Park, and you can see the regional pathway ending at the backside of the Sawtooth Middle School. We recently became aware of a competing map that is on the Park and Recreation's pathway page, that's shown on the right. And if you look below, it extends past Settlers Park all the way out to Linder. It's still not on our property, but staff has insisted that it be put on our plan. So we've, since that insistence has been made, we've investigated to see what's actually out there. So if you look at this map, you can see what is existing. The yellow line is an approximation of where the regional pathways are intended to be based on the maps that I just showed you. The blue lines are micro paths and purple are sidewalk. All of those micro paths and sidewalk that we can find are five feet wide. There are, it's important to note that there are no 10-foot paved pathways in the area. We couldn't find any, nor is there likely to be any that would connect to our project, because as you can see, the property to the east, just past our property, is already built out, and there's not a 10-foot pathway that's been reserved in that area to connect to. Now, over the past 48 hours since we received the staff report, we've been working on this. We've been, we thought we had sorted this out with Kimberly Warren at Parks, and this is what we thought we had an agreement on. Here you can see in blue where we had proposed the regional pathway to be located. It would be on Windswept Drive on the front side of these lots. In addition, what we had proposed was to include a looped natural surface pathway through the open space up top, and yes, we would be asking the council for a waiver to allow that to remain open. We've since been informed that that is not, no longer the preference of Parks, but this does remain our proposal, and let me explain why. There is no reason for a 10-foot pathway when it will not connect to a similar pathway. We can, you can see that on the map, that the likelihood of that ever occurring is essentially nil, given that the other properties have already developed. You can also see that there are already connections on five-foot sidewalks all the way from Settlers Park to Sawtooth Middle School. They don't necessarily coincide with what's shown on those maps, but those connections are there, and again, they are on five-foot pathways. It's expensive to install a 10-foot path, it's expensive to maintain it for an HOA, and an HOA probably won't maintain it if it's just a 10-foot path to nowhere. There's no reason to put a regional trail between the Coleman Lateral and drains on the other side. Placing the regional trail in front of the lots is better from a security perspective, and it provides a more likely connection to the east. And I do want to emphasize that placing a trail like this in front of the lots is exactly what was done at Movado Estates, and it's worked perfectly. I want to emphasize that we don't have anything against trails. We don't have any things against, against pathways. We do them all over the city, we've installed a high amount of them. We just want to make sure that it makes sense, and we don't think that what staff has proposed here makes sense. Next thing was a bit of a head-scratcher for me. At the end of the staff report, there's a suggestion, and this has to do with the color, the color combination prescription and the requirement of eaves. Essentially, there's a suggestion that there should be what amounts to design review for this project and individual building codes for this project as a condition of our DA. Again, staff report recommends things like cohesive color and the minimum one-foot fire-rated eaves on all four sides. We think those requirements are not only unnecessary, but they're not supported by code. We will be building product that will be attractive to buyers in this market. You know, we have the huge investment in this property to make sure that it's something that people want to buy. We do this all over the city, we're very successful at it. There's no need for the city to micromanage that process. And with regard to the eaves, we're proposing to satisfy the building code, not personal appearance opinions of whomever might be looking at this project. There's no UDC basis for these requirements, and they create an administrative headache for the building departments, as they'll have to be reviewing development agreements each time they issue building permits and compare those building requirements to the requirements of code. We think it's unnecessary, and we don't think it should be part of this recommendation. One more item that I know has been an item of concern that, for this group, and I wanted to address it proactively, is the question of schools and school capacity. There is a Um, there is a, a letter from the West Dade School District in, in your packet. I, I want to point out that the, this, uh, data that you have on your screen is the latest figures that we have from the West Dade School District. This is available on their website. It shows that overall, the, the school district does have, uh, capacity. And you can see in some of these, uh, the highlighted points here, we've shown some examples of schools that are under capacity and sometimes significantly under capacity. As you look at the, the school district's letter, uh, the suggestion that's made is that this project wait until OYHE High School comes online. And to be perfectly frank, that's not a problem because of where we are in the process. This is, again, annexation and preliminary plat. We still have to come in for a final plat. We won't have residents until the OYHE High School comes online in, in fall of 2021. So we think that that is mitigated. Uh, over enrollment should be addressed through boundary modifications at the elementary schools and grade schools, as you can see here. And one point that I would point out is that we've reviewed, uh, the, the actual residents of our, in our other projects that look just like this one. And one of the things that we've found is that the, the number of residents with students is actually lower uh, than typical, because this is typical, typically, uh, empty nesters, singles, small families. Uh, and in those reviews, we found that most of the students actually are already within the, within the district. So with that, I'll wrap up. Uh, on this slide, I have the requested modifications to the conditions of approval. Uh, when I come up for rebuttal, I'll have another one that has these all on one, on one page. But just to point, to kind of reiterate what we're asking for, uh, we would ask for a, a recommendation of approval with deletion of conditions A1C, which is the color scheme requirement, A1D, which is the eve requirement, A2A and A3C, those are, those are repetitive of each other. That's the new common lot. Again, we don't believe that that's required, given that the irrigation easement does not cover the entirety of that rear common lot, and we can meet the landscaping requirements. Uh, A2B and A3D, those were the relocation of the pathway on the, on the far east of the project. And then finally, with regard to the regional pathway, we would suggest a substitute condition. And that would be to allow for public access for purposes of a regional pathway in the location identified on the applicant's 12-5-19 depiction. The applicant shall confer with the Parks and Recreation Department to identify final width and dimensions in connection with this, the hearing before city council. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, any questions for the applicant?
Sure.
Commissioner Castanelli.
Uh, Keith, I've got, uh, one question on amenities. You're, you've kind of, uh, highlighted this as for empty nesters, yet your amenities are tot lots and, and playground structures. Can you, uh, give me a reason why?
Uh, yeah, come in, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Castanelli. Um, the thought process is to make it a welcoming location for anyone. Um, that we, there are a list of approved amenities in, in the city of Meridian. Many of them are focused on tot lots and that sort of thing. We think it's still a worthwhile investment in the community because a lot of times what you might see is maybe a divorced family and kids coming to, to visit and then looking for the, those amenities are helpful there. It may be empty nesters, grandparents and kids taking advantage of those, of those amenities as well. So I, I understand your question for sure. Um, but we feel like it's still, even though the, the number of kids is generally lower um, than what you might see in a typical subdivision, it's still a worthwhile investment.
And Mr. Chair, another question?
Absolutely.
Um, what, uh, given that that's your target market is, is, uh, empty nesters, what, uh, uh, what are, what's going to be, uh, the size range of the homes?
Um, the, you know, so the, the lot ranges are, the, the frontage is between, to answer your question from before, between 32 and, and 40 feet. Um, square foot sizes, Lauren? Somewhere between 1,500 to 1,900 square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
That's to make sure there's zero lot line and, and single family, correct?
That's correct.
Commissioner Holland.
Mr. Chair, um, could you share with us a little bit about how many of the homes would be detached product versus attached?
Yep. Do we have a specific number? Just pull up the... Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Holland, um, I just wanted to confirm that. So most of the single-story product would be attached. Um, and the, so the, and those, those plans would be finalized as we go forward, but that's, that's what we anticipate.
Thank you. Um, one other question, follow-up question, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
So one of the, the notes that Sonia briefly touched on was, um, and I know that we're, we're not talking about what we previously looked at with the Alpina Townhome Project, but one challenge with the piece that's to the south of this property was that they didn't quite have enough access block length to allow for commercial on that corner very easily. Was there any thought to maybe adding a little bit of commercial to this component instead of doing all single-family homes?
Yeah, Madam Chair, or Mr., Mr. Chair, Commissioner Holland. I was in front of Ada County last night and answered a lot of questions with Madam Chair. So the, there, there has been a lot of thought put to that. And the, the point that Sonia made kind of puts us in a tough, a little bit of a tough spot. Um, I know that the, the city is going through a comprehensive plan amendment process, and there's been very clear direction not to be looking for comprehensive plan amendments while that's going on. Um, and as you know, this entire, that, our entire property is comprehensive planned and medium residential. So that's one issue that we, we have to deal with. Um, we've been in conversations with the owners of the property to the south, and we have looked at, um, possibilities for how to address the, the access down there. So let me show you. We, we anticipate that their access would look something like this. Um, that, and that is something that we discussed with Bill early on. Um, but we, no, we don't feel comfortable asking for a comprehensive, which is what it would take, a comprehensive plan amendment to put commercial on the south there, given where the city is and those amendment processes. And we anticipate that there can be a, 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 a viable commercial use down there. And the, and the neighbor to the south is indicating no objection to our project.
Follow-up?
One more follow-up. Sonia, if, just hypothetically speaking, if this commission wanted to see a change there to allow them to do some commercial, to kind of float with that, that commercial off of the south, could we make a recommendation that council might consider waiving the fee for that comp plan change? Is that something we could even talk about?
Chairman, um, Commissioner Holland, I believe what was discussed before is possibly doing a bump in the mixed use without an amendment to the future land use map to enlarge that area to make it more feasible for more of a mixed use development.
Or floating it north.
Right.
Yeah.
So one more follow-up to that. If that was something that was allowed and they were willing to float that regional designation north a little bit, would you be open to considering alternate ideas to give more connectivity and more room for a commercial development to come on that corner?
Commissioner Holland, I think the, you know, obviously, um, what we're talking about there is a, a whole number of factors that are outside of our control. Um, we don't know, you know, what the, the neighbor to the south is indicating. It would be interested in specifically, are they going to be doing office, combination of residential, how much space they need? Um, I, I think we're looking at this from the factors that we can control. And the factors that we can control are a, a, an appropriately dense residential project that transitions, as you, one would expect, adjacent to commercially zoned area. So I, I would say, you know, we'd be more comfortable remaining with the, the proposal as we have it right now.
That's it for now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Castanelli.
You can see it, my...
I can see that you're over the...
Um, you, uh, Keith, you mentioned the, uh, on the canal up there, the lateral, uh, on the north side, uh, and that, uh, the easement is 15 feet from center line. So how much does that give you from the back of the lots from seven through 20 to that, to the easement? In terms of a width?
Having our planner come up to give me a little assistance on that. So, uh, Commissioner Castanelli, it covers about half of that area. It's about 50, 50 to 60 feet wide, uh, that green space that you see on this map.
So I guess it might, what I'm trying to understand is where, uh, where is the, where would the center line be on that? Is it, is it the, the thick blue?
That's the, the blue, the low.
That's the, that's the edge, that's the 15, that's the 15 from center line?
Right.
There? So center line would be, where would?
Proxim- probably, that's, you know, center line on the blue and then 15 feet out.
So is the, is the, is the lateral, is the lateral on the, the lateral would be on the thin blue then? Is that?
Correct.
Okay. So virtually, am I wrong in that virtually all of that would be the, the easement for the irrigation district?
No, approximately half. 15 from center line.
Okay.
15 feet on both sides.
Right.
Yeah.
Sorry, I shouldn't.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to see a more, just, I'm not exactly sure, but it looks like you're losing most of that, uh, most of that is easement, really.
A good chunk of it is easement. You can put sod in those easements. You can't put trees in those easements. And again, it's not a huge number of trees that you need to put in in order to meet code, and they could go on the outside of it.
Excuse me, Chairman. Um, the plat that they submitted depicts a 40-foot wide easement. The Coleman Lateral.
So that was my question to legal. I mean, we have two opinions on how this rolls down. So can you give us a, some guidance on where we go from there?
Well, you could recommend that one consideration would be, option B, to continue and have them work, work through that staff and applicant. Seems like a big difference.
The plat says 40?
Their surveyor put it down as 40.
Okay. Keith, do you have a thought? Give us guidance on which one? I mean, if we have a survey that sells us 40, we've got to go in the direction that makes more, or, and that's what our staff's responding. Do you have any feedback that you can give us on where discrepancy might lie?
I'd have to investigate where the surveyor came up with that number. What we've, our understanding is it's 30 to 15 from center line. So we'd have to investigate it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
Another, uh, follow-up to Commissioner Holland's question, uh, about the southern property. Have you, uh, other than just, uh, figuring out where to put the stub street, uh, have you looked at, or I mean, have you talked with them? Uh, I know we've had a couple of proposals come through. Have you talked with them at all about looking at that as one? I mean, I, I, that's what, I think that's a lot of what we, uh, discussed in, in the previous times we looked at that corner piece, was having this fit as one, one larger parcel. I realize that, that it's not, that you're limited because you don't own that. Um, but at the same time, how much conversation have you specifically had with them about trying to do something and working together to develop one large, one large piece that I think, that we can all be happy with?
Commissioner Castanelli, thanks for the question. So we have had a number of conversations with them. Uh, you know, that included asking them to tell us where they want our stub street to go, to accommodate what they might want to do in the future. So we gave them the, you know, the two options. It could have been, um, let me show you. The, you know, the stub street could have been further in or here, or it could have been here. They preferred right here. Um, beyond that, they're, they have no plans of moving forward in the immediate future, and we can't control that process. We don't, you know, they, they own the property. They get to decide what's going to happen there. So, um, it becomes so hypothetical that it would be difficult to, to, to make any commitments along those lines.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
Can I ask a question to, to staff? Sonia, have you, did, did you guys give any thoughts, ideas as far as how they might bring that, that entire corner together?
I'll defer to Bill on that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, uh, not with this particular application. Uh, I, as you are aware, Josh departed the city about the time that that application came forward on Alpina. I took it over, tried to get him to the finish line. As you call, it was continued multiple times by this body to ensure that there could be something cohesive there on that, that corner. My recollection of the, and I don't want to get too much into the weeds on how this integrates with that piece. We're here to talk about the applicant's property this evening. We only put it in the staff report to bring it to your attention just because we know, I remember it being something that you guys were adamant, you wanted to see all of this come in as a cohesive plan. But what you have this evening is a plan that abuts that property. Uh, just going back to your ear- earlier conversations, the comp plan allows you, allows an applicant to float that. The, the comp plan designation isn't parcel specific. So those were the discussions that were had on Alpina, is that we would probably orient the mixed use towards the Linder roadside so that we could get adequate access off of Linder, and then it would feather into more residential to the north and to the east is some of the conversations we had. And we also had the applicant lay out a road network so we could see how it could all be interconnected. Again, that wasn't something that we relied heavily on when we pre-apt with this applicant. Uh, we felt medium density, it, that's what the comp plan has, but we did want them to have those conversations with that property owner as to how it would, how they could facilitate something into this commercial piece, because we all know the challenges is that that, that commercial corner is going to have. So long story short, that's why we posed it to you, whether or not, this is annexation. Um, this is our one chance to get it right. And if you feel like this project isn't integrating appropriately with that southern pro- boundary, uh, and you don't feel like the open space is where it needs to be, or the parking requirements aren't meeting the standards that you're looking for, then certainly that's within your purview this evening to say, it's not the right time for this piece of property.
At the same time, we got to make sure we're focused on this application.
Exactly.
So it's one of those, I appreciate the balance, but make sure we're cautioning ourselves to focus on the application in front of us. So, um...
Mr. Chair, maybe I could add something to that?
Absolutely.
As I understand it, Alpina, one of the reasons that it went away was because of the commercial, or excuse me, the kind of high amount of residential and small amount of commercial that was in there. That is, that's what I understood was one of the, the complaining items.
Well, I think the challenge is we were trying to float it so we could get better access to the roads, so that there could be a mixed use of three separate, different types of uses there.
But I, I think, Mr. Chair, your, your point is well taken. You know, we can only control what we can control. And this is the only application that's in front of you. And it, and it is strictly in accordance with the comprehensive plan.
Do you have additional follow-ups? Commissioner Castanelli?
I have a couple of separate questions.
Go right ahead, sir.
Keith, what is, it's, it's been, it's been brought up and, and, and obviously there's some objection on your end, but as far as, and I know in your presentation, you, you stated because it's, it's not part of the, it's not part of, uh, uh, design, uh, plans, but on the colors and on the eaves, now that I'm seeing this back in front of me, um, what is, what's, what's the big objection to, uh, adding in different color schemes and also, uh, the eve requirement?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Castanelli, so substantively, you know, we, the, 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 the condition with regard to colors, you know, sure, I mean, you know, we're going to do a good job of making sure that it's an attractive product. The issue here is the principle of it. Um, we, the, the duplex buildings are subject to design review, and we, we all understand that. That's all, that's part, that's per code. The individual, uh, single-family detached product by code is not subject to design review. And when we impose these color conditions, what we're saying is, is that someone, subjectively, somewhere is saying that they're, they have a better opinion of what the color combination should be than the, the actual owner. And city code doesn't include that requirement. It doesn't include anything like that for detached, single-family. Um, with regard to the eaves, we think that we should adhere to building code. And we have a, a variety of, of, of models that employ eaves in different ways. They all meet building code. They've all been successful product. We don't... We don't see a reason for there to be a variance from what building code would otherwise require here. And we don't think it makes sense to impose those different building code requirements in DAs that then have to be cross-referenced in the future.
Do you have additional?
No.
Commissioner Seal or Commissioner McCarville, we've kind of skipped out on you guys. Do you want to add any questions? Mr. Seal, go right ahead.
I don't have any questions at this time. Looks like it's been pretty well covered.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, may I respond to something?
Absolutely.
It actually is a code requirement for all, design review applies to single-family residential attached dwellings and it can also apply to single-family residential detached if it's required as part of a development agreement. That is Section 11-5B-8B2. Staff isn't recommending that the detached units comply with all of the design standards, although we could recommend that as part of a development agreement. We're only recommending that the color scheme requirements in the design standards apply to all of the units, so it's consistent. So, just for clarification. And also on the eve requirement, the reason staff included that condition in the development agreement is because the applicants submitted conceptual elevations that show eaves. So if that's actually what they're intending on building, that just solidifies that to make sure that happens. If it's not what they intend on building, they shouldn't be showing that on their concept elevations. So for, if that is the case, then that's what they need to show, what they're actually going to build. So that is in your purview. That is in a code requirement. That is correct, but it is what they're proposing on their elevations, so. Just for clarification. And while I'm here, if I could just go ahead and address the other two changes that they're asking for. The new common lot, they want that deleted and the relocation of the open space, the pathway lot. Per the pathways plan, we do want to see a pathway along that waterway. The relocation of the open space for the micro path is at the request of the police department and ad for our code requirements for Septed reasons. We don't want a pathway that's clear over, hidden behind building lots for public safety. If they, well, I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner McCarville, did you have a comment, ma'am? Or a question, I'm sorry?
I guess there's a whole, it seems to be a whole lot of stuff that's gone back and forth here that we're, it looks like we're being asked to referee here tonight. And I'm just wondering, is, do you feel more time is going to be beneficial or is the applicant and staff just at a stalemate here and needing us to resolve it?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner McCarville. It's a hard question. The, there has not been much time to resolve this because the staff report only came out a couple of days ago. What I would hate to do is to have it kicked down the road and then, and then not have it resolved with, you know, not have more information until immediately before the next hearing and kind of have ourselves into a do loop. So I mean, we're obviously always willing to have additional conversations and try to resolve some of these things. This, it sounds like this easement thing might be something that we need to get resolved. But I, I am, you probably hear the frustration in my voice that we would like to have had some more time to address some of these issues from the time of the staff report till now.
So Heath, can you bring up your picture on the different pathways? And I have a quick question on a clarification wise. So the red, those are the master pathways. Those are ten feet, correct? The existing?
Correct.
And then the connection point, if you were going to Apple Pine Street, which is at the end of?
Right here.
Yeah. If I'm correct, there's a common lot at the end there that is ten feet. So I'm just making sure I'm clear.
There is a narrow common lot. I think it's a driveway.
Okay.
If I remember correctly. It allows the neighbor, this person to take access out onto Apple Pine if I understand it.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm understanding that area correctly. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Seal.
I'll just, I'll ask the applicant. I asked it earlier, but the report from the Meridian Fire Department basically says that you're going to be limited to thirty building lots because the project does not meet all required access road widths and turnarounds. So are you guys going, I mean, what's your plan to address that?
Commissioner Seal, we're in agreement with that and we will be working on getting an access across our neighbor's property to get, in order to exceed the thirty, but we are in agreement with that condition and it's part of your proposed conditions right now.
Thank you. Any additional questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Ma'am Clerk, do we have folks who would like to testify?
Mr. Chair, we had nine residents signed in. Four wish to testify, the first of which is Julianne Domingo.
Ma'am, thank you for being here tonight. Please step up, pull that microphone close to you.
Yeah, to fit my height. Good evening, folks.
Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Julianne Domingo and I'm a resident from 4144 Movado Greens.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I'm actually a new homeowner in there and I think one of, the house model that I am in right now is one of those that they're going to be building in this planned community. So it's the build more. So for the testimony, inside the house, it's really like, the design is really good and the quality of the finishes and all, it's, I can really say that it's high quality. I don't have any problem at the moment. And when I actually had like a third-party inspector to do like inspection and stuff, he didn't even find anything to fix in terms of the, like the materials, the flooring and all, so I don't have any issues on that one. So interior, the design, the color combinations and all, it's really good. Functionality-wise, it's also good. And then the community itself, I think it's really well-maintained. And like at nighttime, when you look outside of your house, it's nice to see the neighborhood, how there's, how to say, good symmetry. There's variation, but they have maintained the symmetry. It's beautiful to look at. And when you drive in, like going back from the office, you'll feel like I'm at home. It's beautiful, the fencing and all. And also the landscaping. It's really nice.
Perfect.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here. Thank you, ma'am, very much.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, we have Serena Ormsby Alvarez.
Good evening, Ms. Alvarez. How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Please state your name and your address for record, please, ma'am.
Thank you. My name's Serena Ormsby Alvarez. My address will be actually 4120 East Esperanto. I'm closing the next week or so. So I will be part of the community very soon, but I've been eyeballing it while it's been developing and actually just waiting for my home to be complete. I'm relocating here, or I've recently relocated in September with my employer for a new position in the Boise area. I'm from Arizona. So I'm not sure if us foreigners are loved the way we wish we were.
We are happy to welcome you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. But I love the community. I love the Boise area. And I was just trying to find something that was centrally located to my work and to the community and to resources like grocery stores and gas stations and all of that. So the community, I'm in Movado Greens as well and we like the price point. Me and my family, we have a small family, one child and a spouse and my spouse works from home. And the home itself seems to be well-constructed from what we've observed and the same thing, I had an inspector come in and there was just really minor things that needed to be tended to and they were tended to quickly. But the price point and the upgrades on the inside of the built, inside of the house were really what drew us there. The community, when you pull in, it's really nice to look at, like she mentioned. But I liked the fact that it was low maintenance because I have, like I mentioned, I have a child, she's two and a half. So she takes a lot of time. So not having to spend time taking care of the grounds and making sure that, you know, that my neighbor's trees aren't growing into my house and having those sorts of awkward conversations that you often have when there's not rules. I'm appreciative of those at this point and I'm grateful for the low low involvement in having to care for my property. So those are some of the things that brought us there. And the parks and the tot spaces, I think is what you said. So we have a little, there's one close by that I'm grateful for because she's got lots of energy and I can just walk her over there. And the community has the, you know, the sidewalks and the walking paths and those are things we were looking for that we could keep her safe and also still get her exercise and us get exercise without having to get mowed over by some automobiles. But yeah, that's what brought us there. So, thank you.
Thank you so much and welcome to Idaho.
Mr. Chair, Steve Yap Yap. Sorry if I didn't say that right.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Steve Michael Yap Yap. I'm from 4180 East Esperanto Street, also in Movado Greens subdivision. So I'm a new homeowner, first time in my entire life to buy a new house here in Meridian and I'm proud of it. One thing to note about buying a house built by Black Rock Homes is that they built it with high quality. Julie and I, Julie and I had the same experience finding a house on the same price point. So we have a comparison between a house that's like three hundred K versus a house built by Black Rock, three hundred K. You'll notice that the quality, the specification, the details of the house built by Black Rock is outstanding. We shared the same third-party to inspect the house and the findings was very minimal. It's just some design structures that we need to be easily fixed. And shout out to Jaden, one of the Black Rock's team member who helped us building those things. I like that it's a low-maintenance kind of house in our lifestyle today. Time is very, it's collateral that we need to put emphasis on. The low-maintenance housing is very important to us. We don't need to preserve anything. The HOA are preserving the gardens, the trees and all those things, the fencing and stuff like that. So we're very, we're very appreciative of that one. And one thing to note about the Black Rock's development is that when we drive around the vicinity of our subdivisions, we always see the signs that reminds all the construction workers to say, "Leave the place better than it was used to be." So as a person living in the central area where some of the houses are still being built, it's nice to see that the places are well-maintained. It's clean. There's no complaint on our side that the woods are scattered around, concrete are everywhere. No, it's very clean. It's well-organized. So development is really, really well-planned. So thank you through Black Rock for doing that as a proactive approach, as a homeowner on that. And yeah, that's, that would be all for my end. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you being here.
Mr. Chair, Ping Cheng.
How are you, sir?
Good, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Peng Cheng and I stay in 2153 East Renek Street. That is a house in Varaux community. I just moved into my house three, two months ago. I really like this place and I spent a couple of months searching for housing here. And actually, Black Rock Homes distinguish itself from other builders. They put a lot of thoughts into their design and layouts of rooms and houses. Can give you a very small example of their thoughts is they have a lot of like openings, extra windows with privacy glasses on the walls. So that'll keep, give you good privacies, but in the meantime, it'll let a lot of sunlight into the house and have a bright inside of the house during the day, my entire daytime. So that's one of the great designs I like about this house. Also, they, when they pick the locations, they also, they always pick locations which is convenient and you can get good access to like other businesses, like, you know, restaurants, gas stations, shops and easy access to freeways. I like the locations very well. And they also build a great quality house at a great price points. My house is only like three hundred K for a single family or just myself. I think it's quite affordable. I really like that. That doesn't mean like they compromise quality. I did also hire some third-party inspector for inspections and they didn't find any major problems. Everything is, looks perfect. I think we had a lot of discussion about the, you know, the color of the sightings and this sessions. You know, they did, I believe they did a great job in, you know, keep, how, I mean, to have some variations within the same community, but they always, and also in the meantime, they picked the right colors for individual houses. I think it looks kind of uniform with some good variations as well. Final point is I like the low maintenance of the house because I'm the first-time buyer of house. I have no experience of, you know, mowing your lawns and doing all kinds of works. And the HOA takes care of that and I feel like it saved me a lot of time and efforts. I don't have to purchase a lot of extra stuff I don't want to use all the time. Yeah, so in general speaking, I think this builder will definitely provide houses of good qualities and I'm speaking in favor of this project. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, that's all that signed up to speak tonight.
Thank you, ma'am clerk. Sir, if you'd like to come forward? Please state your name and your address for the record.
Steven Lloyd. We live next door to the development to the east.
I think we've seen you guys lots of times on applications before.
Yeah, one other one. I just, I wanted to add that, you know, we're kind of stuck in the middle of this whole thing and it was nice to this development that they reached out to us and asked us what our opinions were and, and actually kind of appreciate, we appreciated that. When the development came into our east, the Cory Barton subdivision, nobody reached out to us. Nobody asked us what our opinion was. And now when we look out, you know, I mentioned they, they built five, six two-story houses to our east, right on our property line. And with an elevation, they had to raise the elevation four feet before they started the project. So we have a wall of homes that now when we look to our east, that's what we see. I reached out to them, tried to get in hold of people with them. They, nobody returned phone calls and now we have this. But they did build the single, the single across the street. They built the single family, the single level ones across the street, which would have been nice. They could have flipped them very easily. In the conversations we've had with them, they agreed to put the single-family homes on our property line, which is kind of nice, which will increase our view and things. So I don't know if I'm for or what, I'd rather it stay a pasture. It's really nice over there that way, but I know that's not going to happen. So somebody that's coming in that's willing to work with the community and work with us and be a good neighbor, we do appreciate it. So we're here to give that opinion. All I ask with the ones that are happening, whatever happens around us, we've decided, last time we were here, we were going to decide, are we leaving or are we staying? We've decided to stay. So whatever happens in front of us, to the side of us, behind it, when we're talking about ten-foot pathways that butt up to our property, it does affect us and we'd like to, you know, to have our say in that as part of the community. So what they're doing next to us, they've, they've reached out to us and agreed to put that in the plan, so we do appreciate that. I just wanted to leave that opinion, so.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this application that hasn't been heard from yet? Okay. Going once, going twice? Okay. Thank you. Would the applicant like to come back up and write any feedback or if you have any comments or additional thoughts now that you've got to sit down and think through some of the questions before?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Heath Clark, 251 East Brun Street in Boise. So a couple items. I, we went back, we pulled out the plat and to check that data. The plat, as Sonya mentioned, does say forty-foot easement, so we'll concede that it's a forty-foot easement, get everybody on the same page about that dimension. The plat also shows that that lot is seventy feet deep. So outside of the forty feet, there's another thirty feet to be able to satisfy the, those landscaping requirements. So there shouldn't be a concern about lack of information with regard to that easement. We'll concede the forty feet. But again, the plat also shows an additional thirty feet. With regard to parking, one point I didn't make before is that lawn care is included with it. with this project. And so what does that mean for your garage? Your garage isn't being taken up with lawn mowing equipment, all that sort of thing. That's another reason why we think that going above and beyond the parking requirements per code is just not appropriate in this case. And then finally, I went back and looked at the elevations on this eve question. Again, those are concept elevations. Thank you, Sonia. Those are not final designs. There's not a specific requirement in the conditions of approval of those designs. And that's a good reason because they are conceptual. Those, we, in our product, we use four-foot wrapped eaves. So it appears from the front that the eaves continue beyond the, on the sides. And that's what you would, that's what you're seeing here. We're selective in the way we use them. Yeah, so for example, if there's a side street, you would see an eve all the way across that side. But we always meet code and we prefer to be able to design to this particular site. So we stand by the request to remove the eve condition. Again, we're concerned about the principle of the thing. But we did go back and as we were sitting there, you know, looked back at the color scheme requirement again. Again, concerned about the principle, but you know, we are going to meet those color scheme requirements. So what I'm proposing is that we would concede on the color scheme condition and, but stand by our guns, as it were, on the eve condition. So with that, that's all I had to add after having a couple of minutes to think about that. So happy to answer any further questions.
Any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Castle. Absolutely. Can you pull up, Sonia, can you pull up the plat there, plat map? If you can pull up the one that's colored with the single family, or with the single-story versus the two-story? Had you, Keith, have you, did you give any thought, I see you got some, it's blended, it's mixed and maybe that would be better when it's laid out. But did you give any thought to almost running the perimeter in single and having that interior portion being two-story?
Oh, you know, we've looked at a number of different alternatives there. And Commissioner Castanelli, I'm not sure if there's a specific area that you're more or less concerned about. The areas on the west are against Linder Road, so we want to make sure that that has a nice transition into the streetscape. The areas on the east, that was done in consultation with our neighbor where they had requested it. On the south, you know, we anticipate that that would be adjacent to commercial, so it would be appropriate to have the taller, taller structures there. And we do need to have a mix of product type, so we wouldn't want to overwhelm it with all single-story versus all two-story. So we felt like this was a good balance.
I was even thinking maybe as far as the neighbor to the east, they're bringing that that whole block there, lots, can't read that 20, 20-something through 30-something. There's, you've got it four and four and maybe doing that all single, single level if that would be a little bit more neighborly. It was just a thought, if you'd looked at some of those things.
We've looked at it, but, and again, those, the lots that were identified on the east were identified in collaboration with our neighbor.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Holland.
Mr. Chair, a couple of comments for you, Mr. Clark and Mr. Bailey out there, just looking at this project. I know, you know, the project that came into the south of it had a similar comment that we can't be handicapped on what the project to the north does of us. We don't know when they're going to come in and develop. And it's kind of the same thing. It's the chicken and the egg. Which one comes first? How do you work together? And your product type, you know, you've got a lot of endorsement in the room. I've driven through your neighborhoods. I think you've got a nice product that fits a need in the community, absolutely. No questions or concerns for me on the quality of the product. And you know, we can certainly work through some of these requests you have and talk about those internally. But we do have to look at how this product fits in with what's surrounding it. And so my concern is with the two-acre parcel down south of it, the biggest challenge that we had in that product was connectivity to Linder Road so that they could have more access. So if that, I can't remember how big that piece was in the south, but it was two to three acres. It wasn't a huge piece. So that was the project we were looking at earlier. So if this was, or a similar concept was to come back in that looked something like this and you had people going in, they still didn't have a great access out of Linder Road and they wanted to have that full left turn onto Linder Road, they'd have to go through your subdivision to get out on Linder Road with the full access. So there could be some traffic concerns and there could be some limitations on how this corner develops out with the way that yours develops out there. So just putting that comment out there. I think we need more commercial in this area. If you look at the compass report, it said that the jobs-to-housing ratio is .2 for this area within that square mile. And it should be somewhere between 1 and 1.5 to be the right jobs-to-housing ratio. So part of our job is to try and make sure that we get the right blend for the comprehensive plan, make sure that we do the right thing. And I think I would personally like to see the regional designation floated north a little bit to encompass just a little bit more of your site, even though I'm okay with the idea of having some housing in there and maybe even some multifamily in there. I struggle a little bit because I'm trying to figure out what would be the best for Meridian in the long run about how this property integrates with the ones around it.
I understand your comments. What we can do is take the comprehensive plan as it exists and the property that we control as it exists and we don't control that property to the south. And as I mentioned before, this is the planning for this property was for medium density. So that's about all I can add to that. I'm certainly sympathetic to your concerns, Commissioner Holland.
Keith, when you're, in regards to the police concerns over walking through a common drive into a pathway that goes into a, whether we put a pathway there or it's natural or whatever it is, thoughts on that, feedback? Because I know we're, we get a lot of feedback from the police in regards to not having things that are ended, where there's no access, where people just go back there and cause mayhem. So any feedback there?
Mr. Chair, so the, I'm a little perplexed by it. If you move that pathway connection up, then you're basically creating a dead end in that common area. Whereas if you leave the pathway as we've proposed it, you have a through path through the entire thing. So I guess I'll be honest, I don't understand why this is, why our proposal is less safe than what the alternative is, which again, creates a dead end.
Okay. I just want to make sure we got that squared away. Thank you for the feedback. Commissioner Holland.
Mr. Chair, one more follow-up question. So looking at where the street, looks like it's called Woodpine, would stub to the north, does that connect into anything right now or that would just connect into the, towards where that other property exists and into future development land?
Commissioner Holland, that's correct. It would stub, that's a stubbed street into future development.
So virtually, when we're creating this plat, you're going to have one point of access until the property to the south and the property to the southeast of you would develop?
Until we, unless we can get an access ourselves across those properties, which is always an alternative.
Have you had any conversations with the property to the southeast of you and how, when their timeline would look like?
I'm not aware, but I'm going to ask another member of the team.
I think Lauren should just stand up here and hang out with us. No, I'm just joking.
We'll have a party.
Commissioners, Lauren Bailey, business address 4824 West Fairview Avenue. We did speak with Mr. Creek to the southwest, or southeast of us. He does intend to sell his property for development, but the price point he expects to get is astronomical, to say the least. And so we don't see anything happening with that near term unless somebody decides they want to pay what he's asking. But that is his goal in the end is to sell that. He doesn't live there. He lives in Eagle. And so we have had discussions with him. He didn't have any opposition to the development, but, and he's not here tonight, but.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Castle, you have a question?
Keith, did, and I don't know, without seeing the boundary lines there and what the irrigation district, where they're at, were, are you able to shift to the north at all and bring the open space into the interior or because of where, because of where the boundary is in the easement? It says, it sounds like you still have got 30 feet. Did you look at rearranging this at all to where you could do that? Push it up, push it to the, to the boundary, to the north and bring open space? And because obviously, that's an issue where there's issues about the, multiple issues about the open space right now. Pathways and where to put that with what the police are wanting and what staff is wanting, what you want and whatnot. So can you address that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Castanelli, the, to date, and we've looked at a lot of scenarios. If you, if you, it's kind of hard to see on this, on this drawing, but if you, where I'm pointing is where it has the 40 feet that's identified. And then over here, you have a measurement of 70 feet. The, in our view, what makes sense is to leave it as is and to allow for kind of a natural area to be able to come in between those two waterways. To us, that would appear, that would be diminishing returns, given the requirements that it would take to be able to relocate that, both financially and with the irrigation district. So our proposal is for it, is to be able to, to use it as it exists, as essentially an amenity within that open space.
Follow-up. Can you, can you expound on that a little bit? You mentioned diminishing returns. Are you saying that if you push it to the north, you're going to get fewer lots?
No, you, the cost of relocating the, that waterway, I believe you guys have restrictions on covering waterways at this point under your, under your code. Those are the kinds of things that I'm talking about in addition to whether you'd lose lots or not.
But do you understand what I'm saying? If you can push that to the, if you can shift the northern part to the north and get those, those lots, seven through 21 through 20, another 30 feet north, right to the edge of the easement. And then bring in, then you can, and if you're able to adjust everything, bring common areas into the middle or spread out, maybe a, you know, a couple little, a couple smaller pocket parks throughout. That's what I'm talking about. Is that, are you able, I mean, you've got more room there. You can go to the north. Have you, you know, did you look at that?
And I would add that in addition, there, we have, to the lateral, we have some, there's some drainage ditch, drainage facilities up there as well. And so I, you know, I expect that there would be some, some difficulty in having those in too close of contact. You know, we're obviously willing to explore different alternatives. You know, at this point, that doesn't appear to be a viable alternative, but we're happy to look into it.
Excuse me, Commissioner Castanelli, just for clarification, that 40-foot wide easement is this line right here? It reaches from the back of these building lots to that dotted line.
So that's the current easement, so they can't?
So they can't. They're as far north as they can be.
Exactly.
Okay.
Then I misunderstood your question. I was assuming that you were intending for us to have the easement relocated and that's...
No, no, no. I was wondering, I thought there was, I still thought you had more room to go, to shift and perhaps look at bringing in that, what you've got, that common area up there in, you know, inside. But if they're as far north as they can go, given the easement, okay, thank you.
That's why staff recommended a 20-foot wide common lot outside of that easement, pulling those building lots south a little bit and then putting a 20-foot wide common lot there between the easement and the building.
The rear, in the rear of those homes. Okay, thank you.
And our, and our point is that that's unnecessary, given the additional 30 feet on, that are north of the easement.
If you put a pathway, just to respond to that, if you put a pathway on the north side of the easement, as you can see right here, there's no way for it to connect out to Linder Road. And the school property is developed north of here and there's no pathway. Just for my information.
Can I have my map back? So again, this is what we were proposing. A natural surface pathway actually could go within that easement potentially because you're not putting in an asphalt or an improvement that can't be removed or altered easily by the irrigation district. And then beyond that, what we would anticipate would, and what we proposed, is a regional pathway in the blue location that satisfies what the master pathway maps were looking for. They would go right in these locations. And then you would have a loop trail that goes through the area that can be in and outside of that easement, that you would satisfy the landscaping on the 30 feet outside of the irrigation easement with the tree requirements. But you can certainly, you don't have to go all the way back out to Linder through where this place where it necks off. You can have an access point here. You can have an access point here that allows people to come and do a loop trail, but still take advantage of the developed sidewalks here to get to Linder and then walk the, what, 150 feet up to the school.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
One follow-up question to your proposal there. The regional pathway that you're talking about, the blue dotted line, would that be just a standard sidewalk width or would that be a larger pathway?
Thank you for the question. As I was coming into the hearing tonight, I thought that's what we were going to talk about was the width of it. So the regional pathway, call it preference, is for the 10-foot pathways. But again, just as a reminder, there are no 10-foot pathways to connect to. So you would have a 10-foot pathway to nowhere. So you know, our preference would be to have a detached sidewalk and allow, it would be outside of the rideaway, so we would allow for public access in that area. It can be on the maps as part of the regional pathway, whatever needs to happen there to make sure that the public is aware of that. There is not a 10-foot path to connect to. And as you can see in this picture, there's very little likelihood of that ever occurring.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
So the pathway that's proposed that's coming through the subdivision, that's, I mean, essentially that's just going to be the sidewalk system where people are putting out trash cans and all that. That's going to be part of that as well, correct?
And that, that's true. And that's exactly how it's functioning at Movado. There's a regional pathway that runs through there and it's working just fine.
Okay, and a follow-up. I can tell you that there are, there's nothing that connects to this, but there are 10-foot pathways that are being built in different areas there because I ride on them, on a bike. They are very nice, for sure, because you don't have to contend with, you know, things that are, people are leaving out on the curbs and, you know, dogs running out and trying to bite your leg and different things like that. So I can definitely say that, you know, a wider pathway is something that would be more acceptable, especially if it was on the canal side. And there's always the argument of, you know, there's, there's lights facing into the subdivision, so it's more secure at night. But there's also, you don't want to have it on the inside of a subdivision. So I can understand both sides of that argument. But just in looking at this application, I can say that, you know, the pathway on the, on the northern boundary is something that makes a lot more sense to me as, you know, a member of the community, where I'm going to access that and use it on more of a daily basis, especially as all of this starts to tie in together. These neighborhoods are finally starting to come together in that way. So I'm definitely somebody that would like to see that continue and continue in a way that's more usable for things like strollers, bikes, you know, families, multiple people out on bikes at the same time.
Commissioners, Seal, I appreciate the comments and it certainly makes sense to me. And again, we are pathway proponents and do it all over the place. I think one thing to keep in mind, I don't think, I don't have a map that shows the width of the easement. But if you have the 40-foot easement north of our lots, and then I believe the pathway landscaping requirement bill is five feet on each side of the pathway. So if you put a 10-foot pathway and five feet of landscaping on either side north of the 40-foot easement, you're into those drains at that point. So not only do we think it doesn't make a lot of sense from a practical perspective, but from a, from that perspective, being able to fit it up there, a 10-foot path north of these lots, it presents a number of additional constraints. So there's more capacity to be able to do a wider walk up in front along Wind, what is it? Wind Sweb Drive than there is behind the lots, which is why we proposed it in that in front.
Is there an option to make it bigger instead of having it be a standard five-foot sidewalk?
And that's, Mr. Chair, you know, one of the things that I had proposed was that we have the opportunity before city council to confer with Parks and Rec to come up with appropriate dimensions for that. And so, you know, I think that's something that we could continue the conversations with them about and try to come up with a compromise that makes sense.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Holland.
Couple more comments. I'm full of them tonight. If you're looking back at the, uh, the pathway map that you showed where they connect and don't connect, I know that's certainly a challenge in Meridian where we have a lot of pathways that have starts and stops and, um, Parks Department's trying to work really hard to get that connectivity. Looking at this map and seeing what they might do in the future, and I can't speak for the Parks Department, but I'm imagining that where that canal kind of runs to the south and, um, edges the subdivision that's already been developed, they could reroute that yellow pathway down and then connect it back to Settlers Park where it should have gone in there. I don't know if that's been talked about in the Parks Department or what the long-term plan would be there, Sonia, but if you've got any guidance there, I'd love to hear your thoughts.
Uh, yes, Chairman, Commissioner Holland, if you're talking about right here, there is a pathway that goes along there right now. I believe it's only five feet wide. But yeah, there is a pathway and then there's sidewalk connections out to here. So this, um, extending this, um, and making a multi-use pathway here would allow it to connect to the On Street, um, pathway and then go to the school.
Thank you.
So just, just an additional comment. Anytime you run, uh, like a multi-use pathway, you know, to promote people to use that area along an area where there's so many, um, vehicular conflicts, you know, common driveway that's for vehicular use, um, as well as all the driveways to all those homes there. You know, there's, especially when we route kids through that area to school and stuff, there's, there's a lot of public safety concerns.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Holland.
My other comment that I was going to make, um, if you go back to the, the layout of the plot again, I really like the amenities that you've provided and that you're, you're kind of going above and beyond with the five different types of amenities. I, I think, again, you guys, you put together a nice product. My concern is maybe with its location, because where it's at, you've got a, a sharp corner, corner going from Windswept Drive to Wood Chest if you've got residents living in that, you know, number two, three or four. And you've got a lot of kids that would be potentially playing in that open space area. And then if you have that pathway, I, I worry about what Sonia just mentioned, that there's a lot of cars and traffic and especially if this connects to the piece in the south and there's, ends up being commercial there, there could be challenges with people whipping through this subdivision to try and get out to a full access point.
Commissioner Holland, the, the park, the park is fully, is fenced. That's why, that's why we did that. And you're, you're talking, I think it's four hundred feet to the, to the properties to the south to be able to get to the park. And by putting it in this location, it makes it more prominent. It makes it part of the entry. Um, it, it, you know, as people come by on the, the, what we hope would be the regional pathway, they, they see it, they see it's an inviting neighborhood. I'm a little concerned by the idea that, that sidewalks are not a, a, a safe way for kids to get to school. That's imposing a pretty high standard that I've not seen before. Safe routes to school, routes are always on sidewalks. So I, I, I have a hard time with that suggestion.
Additional comments, questions for the applicants?
Good for now.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. We appreciate it, Heath.
And I, I'll just mention, I, Sonia, do you have that PDF that I sent you? Of the, I have the conditions that we had suggested to be modified, all in one, all in one page, so we don't have to switch back and forth.
I don't have it on the PowerPoint here.
Okay.
Uh, well, actually, maybe.
Or you could just go back and forth between those two, but... I think Bill had saved it, but we lost Bill, so... That's it, at the top. There you go. This, these are the proposed modifications, all in one place for you, so you can use it as you're, as you're deliberating.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Any additional questions for staff before we close the public hearing? Hearing none. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Holland.
I move we close the public hearing for, um, H dash twenty nineteen dash zero one zero nine for Eddington Commons.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to close the public hearing on H twenty nineteen dash zero one zero nine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
What was saying? Motion passes. Team, thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Holland.
McCarville.
Now that we've closed the public hearing, do we want to, first of all, entertain the thought, are we going to continue this or do we want to battle all this out?
Great question to start with.
I think, either way, there's a lot to go through and it would be nice to see it all wrapped up. I mean, in a presentation back from the applicant.
So my, a couple of things I have in my mind right now is, I don't think we have a good handle on where we landed on, actually how much common space is, is, um, out there. I know we've kind of talked through it. We have differing opinions on easements and different things. So there's not a true percentage that we know right now, um, which makes it hard to deliberate on that piece, uh, for sort of talking about shifting things and pathways and easements. So I tend to agree on that point. Additional thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Seal.
I'm thinking the, along the same lines, and there's some, I mean, pretty strong wording in the report by Parks and Recs, uh, Parks and Rec, um, that coincides with some of the staff recommendations. So it would be nice to have, give the applicant the opportunity to work with both staff and Parks and Rec and make sure that we're coming up with something that's cohesive, that's going to work for everything. I mean, that, having that northern boundary bit into some kind of common area and a rideable bike path, to me, is something that I, you know, I'm more in favor of than having it on the inside. I mean, again, trying to ride through, I mean, not necessarily from getting kids to s- s- school safely because a lot of them are going to walk or bike through the, the neighborhood one at a time and get there. But I mean, when you're trying to go through with strollers and a family of bikes and things like that, trying to do that on sidewalks with mailboxes and trashcans and whatever else is out there along the way is prohibitive, to say the least. It's, I, I try not to ride through subdivisions that way, so if at all possible. There's also, I mean, th- there's some other things that are going on in here. The, the most concerning thing to me on this, honestly, is it's from the West State School District. I mean, we're already capping enrollment at Hunter Elementary, which is the closest elementary school. So they're shipping them to Paramount Elementary, which is already over capacity. That to me is, that's a huge concern. I mean, uh, the new high school opening up is going to help out a lot of people, but, I think it's a reasonable expectation when you move into a subdivision, um, the information that you're giving, given on it is the nearest schools that are there. It's not going to be the school that you might end up going to. So I don't know how many people are necessarily going to, you know, go down that rabbit hole to figure out exactly where their child's going to be bused. And they will redefine the, the school boundaries. I know that that's something that's going to, going to, uh, happen, but, um, it just seems like kids and, I mean, I know, I mean, m- my, my kid, my, you know, one of my kids and some of his friends definitely ended up having to go to different schools throughout, um, you know, grade school and junior high when they were growing up in Meridian. So, um, I just want to make sure that that's on the record, that, you know, hopefully we're trying to cut down on that or maybe try to work with West State to get in front of it. And as they say, if anybody wants to contribute land, they're always open to that.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Holland.
Um, to your comment there, it, normally I, I worry about schools too because I know they're all overcrowded. With this specific development, I'm not as worried about it with the ninety-two units because they're not targeted towards family, um, dwellings. They're targeted more towards people who are starting out, kind of having their first kids, but usually by the time those kids are in school system, they tend to move to a bigger house so that they can accommodate those kids. Or empty nesters, as they said, because it's a low maintenance product and I think they're going to see a lot of people that are seniors wanting to move into there or people that don't want to deal with the maintenance. So I'm not as worried about that component of it. My biggest concern about this application, I've already kind of made known, but, um, I really worry about the regional plan for this specific area. You've got a middle school that has no commercial amenities around it. Not that they have to have places that middle schoolers can walk to, but it's sure nice when you are able to walk. And when I went to Meridian Middle School, I walked down the street to the library after school if I had to wait for my parents for a couple hours or I got to, you know, walk to something that was nearby, which was nice, or the dentist office was right down the street, those kind of things. I'm not saying that we can handicap this specific project because we have to look at this project, not the ones around it. But at the same time, we took this piece into consideration when we looked at the piece that was to the south of it that came to us too. Because we get one shot at developing it and once it's developed, it's really hard to, to change it. From my experience in trying to do economic development in other regions, um, it gets really tricky when you have a two-acre piece that you're trying to do commercial on a hard corner. It's the same reason we ended up just approving a storage unit for the corner on the opposite side because they just didn't have enough room for the access to make it work for what they needed. So what I would hate to see is have this come back to us as another storage unit product because no one else can find another fit for it. So I, I have some concerns overall. It's not necessarily this group's fault that they have that problem sitting there, but it's, I think it's our job also to think about it regionally. And I'm a little bit worried that if this project moves forward with all housing, um, we're creating a bigger problem for ourselves in the future, for the other landowners because we'll restrict what they can do.
I went to school next to a tank farm and a hospital. Was that, no, that is art.
Sounds like a good question.
That's the way I'm so weird. A couple of comments. I, I think, um, I do think this product is needed in the city. I think, and I think where it's located, there is a definite need for it. I, I understand we did bring that, bring both properties into conversation, which is, it, it, it does pose a challenge. I think there's a lot of things that we need to be worked out on this thing before we, everything's finalized. I'd like to see, you know, and I know it's a lot of work for staff and, and the applicant, but give us a clean, like, this is what we have, here's how much percentage we have. We have a pathway that's agreed upon by the, by the police, by the Parks Department and this is our, here's the application. Because I think we're trying to call balls and strikes and that may not be a good thing.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
One other comment. If, if, I think it'd be my preference to continue the project too and let them work out some of these details with staff. At the same time, I'd like to make a personal request that they would consider looking at, seeing if they could add some commercial to this. Because I think we can work out the, uh, the issues with the comp plan. With staff, as they mentioned, they can float that regional designation up north a little bit more, especially if we give that endorsement that, you know, we'd like to request that they don't charge an extra fee for that change if they put commercial in the specific section. I just want to see that we can create a better supporting use for the properties around it.
Especially with the access to the road.
Mr. Chair, I would agree. I, I think that little piece on the corner is just going to be locked into no options if we let this be all residential.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Seal.
I agree with that. And, um, I did, I forgot to mention, but I do like the product and I like, I really like the fact that, um, when I go into the public comments, everything I read in there is positive. It's not, you know, um...
It is nice.
It's, it's not negative feedback about, uh, what's trying to go in there. So from that standpoint, I really like what's laid out here. And it's, you know, it's, it's nice to be able to read through some of the positive comments and know that, um, you know, somebody's putting in a product that's, uh, well-received in, in the community and, and needed at this point. That said, I, I, I like your analogy, trying to call balls and strikes where, um, that's, I definitely wouldn't be able to, with the information that's in here as far, um, that's in contention, um, I wouldn't feel comfortable in trying to move forward with something on this. Ms. for Castanelli.
I had a lot of questions.
You had lots of questions. Now you don't want to talk.
I, you're waiting for my comments. I will say that I, while I was up here, I was looking at, at a couple of their products. I was looking at, at, uh, uh, some of the builds in Movado and then, uh, looking at a listing in, uh, is it Verato?
Yep.
Uh, off a U stick there. And particularly the, uh, the attached, uh, the duplexes, single, the single-story duplexes, like the looks of them. It is a nice-looking product and I, it, you know, I mean, based on young families on, on, uh, uh, empty nesters, I think there obviously is that demand there. Concerns that I have, so if we're, if we're kind of giving them some guidance, if we're going to continue this and giving them some guidance, what do they need to work on? Obviously that common lot, they've got to come. There's, there, there has to, has to be something there. I, they can't do it. They're as far north as they can, but I don't like common lots. The bulk of them on the edge of the, edge of the property. It, it needs to be sprinkled throughout, uh, or something that's, that's centered. I realize, uh, you know, with that, uh, you know, with the irrigation, with the canal up there, it's, uh, a little bit more difficult, um, to play with. I am, uh, I, I, if we get into some of the things that we discussed, that they discussed and brought up, colors, colors are temporary in my mind. Homeowners can come in, they'll, they'll paint it. So that's not, that's not as big of a deal to me and HOA will decide eventually what the colors are going to, the color schemes are going to look like, but the colors will change. The eaves won't. And so what I would say is to staff is, uh, I'd want to see them hold firm on that, um, the design of the, of the eaves. Commissioner Holland brought up traffic. That is going to be a big one, especially on these narrow streets with parking on one side. Everybody in that southern, when the, whatever that becomes, unless it's another storage unit, everybody that wants to turn left onto Linder is going to go up through that neighborhood. So it's going to add a lot of traffic and we've got very, we've got narrow streets up there, uh, with, with only parking on one side. So that somehow, that's going to need to be addressed, um, somehow, some way. I don't, I don't know what the solution is, but they've got to, they've got to look at that. And then, uh, you know, I'm in support of staff too and trying to figure out, trying to add, um, more parking, uh, because I think it's, I think it's necessary. Uh, and then it's just going to, it's really going to congest those streets because people are going to be, they're going to be putting cars wherever, squeezing them wherever they can. So I would like to see somehow get, get more out of there. Those are...
So in regards to parking, uh, just to get clarification if we're giving direction to the applicant, is that, you want wider streets or do you want additional parking, like, uh, actual parking stalls or do, what are you looking for?
Yeah. I mean, and, and I think regardless of what you do there, you're going to, you know, they're going to have to give up a lot, they're going to have to give up a lot. They're going to, you know, something's going to have to change to, to, uh, to get a little bit more parking there. But I think that, I think more parking somewhere is, it's, it's, I think it's necessary.
Commissioner, before, before we, I don't mean to interrupt, but I just want to touch bases on parking. Wider streets, are they going to help the parking problem in there because they're not, their lots are narrow? It's, they have curb cuts that prohibit really the parking. You can have a wider street, but when, if you've driven through their developments, you know that their, their lots are thirty-two feet wide or thirty-four feet wide and you got curb cut, curb cut, curb cut. That's what prohibits parking on the street. And that's why we've always brought this concern to you. So I don't want you to think just by us working with the applicant and having them widen the road, there's going to be this magical amount of parking on the street. In those areas where, um, anyways, I'll just digress and leave it at that, but that's not going to solve the problem. So if you want more parking, it's either losing lots, widening the lots, dedicated parking, someplace else on the site. Or you, you try to address the bigger concerns and we move on with that and try to get some consensus with the applicant. But I think you're right. I think there's a lot of issues here tonight, so either one, we need to get this continued out, resolve it tonight, or have a different recommendation on the City Council. I'll stand for it.
Thanks, Bill.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Holland.
One more question for staff. If you're looking at open space requirements, um, it's, it's obviously ten percent open, qualified open space is what's required for a thirteen-point-four-nine acre lot. If they were to go back and consider doing some of this commercial, where are the breakdowns of what percentage changes? Is it always ten percent? If it was, let's say, five acres of residential, eight acres of residential, ten acres of residential, where does that shift happen?
Chairman, Commissioner Holland, the ten percent is based on the residential development area. So if there was commercial, um, proposed, then it would not apply to that area. Essentially would reduce the amount that they'd have to provide. Essentially, it would reduce the amount that they'd have to provide.
Isn't there a, you hit five acres though, and it goes away, or something like that?
Yeah, anything between, or anything over five acres.
Yeah, so at five acres, that, the open space is null.
Thanks, that answered my question.
Additional thoughts? Ms. Russell.
Just on, a question on widening the streets, would widening the streets help with the issue with the fire department as far as the access and emergency access and things like that? Would widening the streets actually help that to where they wouldn't have a limitation on building lots?
Yes, Chairman, Commissioner Russell, yes, it does allow for parking on both sides and to maintain a clear emergency access drive. Widening the streets is gonna give you a few spaces, but like Bill said, it's not gonna, it's not gonna mount to a lot with the narrow lots.
Right, and I'm concerned about, Commissioner Holland had brought up that, I mean, and others have brought up, when that site to the south develops, you're gonna have people coming through that subdivision, so that's where I'm more proponent of, not necessarily making more parking, but widening the streets. And I think the product kind of speaks for itself as far as kind of mitigating the parking circumstances that we have in those subdivisions, they're, they're kind of empty nesters, or people don't, don't have a lot of cars, or it's not gonna be, you know, like they said, huge Super Bowl parties and things like that going on. I mean, it only takes one or two of those places to ruin that idea, but for the most part, I think they're, they're in line with that. So I'm less worried about the parking piece of it, and more worried about just the ability to have, you know, thoroughfare going through there safely.
Where emergency services has problems is when we have the narrow streets, and then people don't have places to park, they park anywhere, even if there's no parking sign, so that's when they have problems, you know, during an emergency.
Additional comments? Or are we ready to, for Commissioner Holland to make a motion? I'm just joking. Is there additional thoughts, or Commissioner Castanelli?
If we're going to continue this, do we need to open it back up to bring the applicant up here to see what dates we're talking about?
I, we can, we can get a nod from them on when they would like to do it, or we can open it back up, whichever way you like.
Or maybe we can, maybe even staff could direct us on a date?
Bill, you have a next date that would work for the applicant, or for you, and/or for you?
Realistically.
Yeah.
And how long you think this might, you guys might need?
Chair members of the commission, it's difficult. I don't think the 19th is gonna give us enough time to work out these issues.
I don't think so either.
The second, we'll probably, don't know, we have a couple of projects for that hearing, and then the 16th, we're pretty full, we're looking and seeing what we have scheduled at this point in time, but I think it might be wise to maybe open up the public hearing, see what the applicant can commit to, and then we'll get a date certain.
Can I get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a, a motion, a second to reopen the public hearing on H-2019-0109, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those same. Hi Heath.
Hi, I'm Mac. Heath Clark, 251 East Front Street. My opinion is that if we can't have this figured out by the 19th, we won't have it figured out, so I think we should put some, put some pressure on everyone and get it sorted out, and go for the 19th.
I think there's already a lot of pressure on everyone for the 19th. I remember that draft. What do we already have on there for the 19th? How many?
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the commission, or Mr. Chair, boy, I'm taking a lead from Keith here tonight.
The real chair's down there, she was there for a long time.
I think I've been used to that, well, there's another chance for her to do that if she wants it.
Exactly.
No, no, no.
Wink, wink.
Anyways, we're looking at the record right now, so next week, we need to begin with the applicant and have a meeting, get it worked out. Next week is staff report week for the following hearing, I don't see where we're gonna be able to find the time to do that. We have city council hearing and P&amp;Z, we've got four items for you coming up on the 16th, or on the 19th hearing. The second, again, we have two projects, and the 16th of January, we have two projects at this point in time.
The second? Is that doable? Try to compromise?
No.
No, yes, maybe?
Yeah, we have vacations planned for that, it's the holiday season.
Yeah.
Are we likely to move the second? What did, what did you get from all that feedback? Was everybody?
We had a quorum?
Commissioner Castanelli, at this time, we do have a quorum.
Okay.
We're gonna hold it in Las Vegas, but.
Yeah, I think the staff has some well-earned vacation probably needed. Yeah.
The 19th of January?
16th.
16th?
Not happy ones.
I, I understand, I think the challenge is, we have a staff that is down to two and a half people, and we're making, trying to make sure your guys' development community is staying happy too, and we're, and it's, so it's a balancing act. I want to make sure we get the right answer for everybody, and I've gotta be a little bit understanding to both sides, and so we start stuffing things through and we miss something, and that puts us in a bad spot. So I gotta trust the staff that they can accomplish what they're trying to accomplish in a certain amount of time. So if we're talking about, you know, you guys are telling us we're, that why Heath School is gonna be online before you guys are done with this, I have less concern that it's not gonna get done before, that doesn't give you enough time.
I wish that were the only concern.
I totally understand, and I know you had dig, dig and make things black and other things like that, so I get that, but I gotta go a little bit with where the staff is too, so. Thoughts? Feedback for Heath?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McCarville.
We just have to recognize the amount of growth that's going on here, and it takes time to get it right, and this one just has a lot of open.
Questions.
Questions and concerns on it, and I don't, I think it's, to say, well, we wanna push through in just a couple of weeks because we, I just don't think it's right, and I think we, as a body, need to tap the brakes once in a while, and this corner, I think, needs.
We've looked at it enough times.
And I'm sorry it doesn't go with the timeline you had anticipated, but I think it's what needs to happen.
Well, and I would agree, I mean, our, our responsibility is to the, is to the city of Meridian, the people of Meridian, and it, I'm more in favor of it, you know, if we gotta go an extra month or whatever it is and work on it and get it done right, that's...
Additional comments or questions? We appreciate it. Let's thought, deliberate a little bit more. Can I get a motion to reclose the public hearing on H-2019-0109?
Mr. Chair.
Oh.
I think we leave it open.
Oh, you're, that's what we're continuing, thank you very much.
If the plan's to continue.
Yeah, with the plan, then a motion's always in order unless there's additional deliberation or conversation needed.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
I move that we continue file number H-2019-0109 and Commons, Commons to January 16, 2020.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Holland.
In that motion, I might make a recommendation to add a few specific items we want them to work on before they come in.
We need to give them guidance on what.
I thought we, I thought we did, kind of, to work with staff.
At least to help Sonia.
Okay, work with staff on, on the building requirements of the, of the development agreement to include eaves and colors, traffic flow, pathways.
Common lots.
Common lots, parking, is there anything else?
Possibility of including commercial.
Street width, commercial review, or mixed-use review.
Strong.
Adding in.
Pathway locations.
Integration with surrounding properties to accommodate the regional mixed use.
Are you getting all this? That motion?
Thank God for Dean who's here taking verbatim notes. Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Or, is the motion maker amenable to?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to continue the application for H-2019-0109 Eddington Commons until January 16th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same, we should pass this. Okay, I have one more motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Castanelli.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
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 Mr. Chair, did you state a date certain for the continuation?
January 16th.